I'm number eight. We have a couple of public hearings this evening. The first one is to hold the public hearing and adopt three things. Adopt a resolution approving the fiscal year 2015-16 proposed operating budget. Item two, adopt resolution approving the 2015-20 five-year capital improvement program and appropriating funding for the 2015-16 capital improvement budget. And item three, adopt a resolution approving the city's appropriations limit, which is the GAN limit, of $37,016,046 for 2015-16.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, I will be discussing both the fiscal year 15-16 operating and capital improvement program budgets. The budgets were previously reviewed at two budget study sessions that were held on June 8th and June 10th. In looking at the general fund revenues, in developing these projections, staff carefully analyzed the historic trends, the current year experience, and available economic data. Total projected revenue is $40.5 million, which is $2.3 million higher, or 6% higher, than the 2014-15 amended budget. The majority of this increase in revenues is primarily attributed to an increase in several of the city's tax revenues, including property tax, sales tax, transit occupancy tax, and business tax. Tax revenues make up approximately 68% of the general fund revenue, with sales tax and property tax representing the largest categories of revenue, with both at 20% of the general fund. One area that I would like to mention is that we are proposing an increase in planning and building revenues as a result of ongoing and planned development and building permit activities that are upcoming this year. And this revenue is projected to increase by $236,000 when compared to fiscal year 14-15. Staff used a very conservative approach when budgeting these revenues, and with the recent passage of Measure N and increasing developer interest, these revenues are anticipated to continue to increase. So just kind of wanted to show you, from our budget study sessions, we had some pictures of some of the current developments happening. Wanted to show you the before and after for the Lee's Buffet site. And then, we had this presentation earlier on the cinema site, so here's the before and after, so kind of relevant. So it's very good news, as Councilman Ibera likes to hear. For general fund expenditures, proposed expenditures are $1 point million higher, or 3%, than the fiscal year 14-15 amended budget. And this is only slightly higher than the April Consumer Price Index, or CPI, which was at 2.4%. The majority of the increase in expenditures can be attributed to an increase in salary, health benefits, and employee retirement costs in accordance with negotiated agreements with the city's six bargaining units. Looking at a snapshot of the general fund on a summary basis, we can see that in the amended budget in 2014-15, you will notice that the budget projected a negative or a deficit of approximately $700,000. And you may ask, how is that possible if we adopted a balanced budget? The deficit balance is caused by additional appropriations that are done throughout the year, such as carryovers, quarterly report adjustments, and any other items that come forward for council approval. However, as you can see on the estimated actuals, we are actually projecting a surplus of $1.3 million. And this is due to higher revenues that we're anticipating and the lower expenditures than we had originally budgeted, so that's a good thing. The proposed budget projects a surplus of approximately $484,000. And given the healthy revenue trends that I mentioned earlier, it is expected that that amount will be available on an ongoing basis. In preparing the proposed budget, staff carefully evaluated base budget requests and proposed increases that are necessary to maintain current service levels. On this slide are the enhancements that are being recommended tonight. The total of both the personnel changes, change requests, and other budgeted requests equals approximately $397,000 and are within limit of the $484 surplus that I mentioned earlier. So that would leave an additional remaining surplus of $87,000. So total supplemental requests for all funds are shown on this slide, with the general fund broken down below. And I'd like to point out the one time I highlighted in yellow, the one-time costs of $1.5 million are being recommended tonight. $700,000 of this, or almost half of the total, is for the down payment for the fire truck, and this will be paid from the equipment reserve fund. And this payment will actually be taking place in fiscal year 2016-17, because that's when we need to order the truck, and we will take possession of it in 2016-17. But we wanted council's approval to move forward, because we have to put in the order. The general fund portion of the one-time cost, after subtracting out the one-time, or the new revenue of $11,000, is $493,000, and this would be funded from excess reserves. And just to quickly go over the three general fund reserve accounts, try to explain this as clearly as possible. You can see that the ending balance for the general fund reserve, which is in the general for 14-15, and the projected for 15-16, so each one, so in 14-15, this is the estimate of what we think we're going to have at year-end, and then fiscal year 15-16 is what we project that we need to have for 15-16. And then the last column is an over/under column. And why I wanted to explain that is during the budget study sessions, I went over toward sort of the waterfall approach. So I did another slide that kind of shows you, so the $100, or $1.2 million that's the surplus is then subtracted, we subtract out $714,000 of that to put it into the general fund reserve to get to our 25% of appropriations. And then the remaining $513,000 would go into the capital reserve. So these are just estimates, so if it came in higher, the same thing happens. It just goes into different buckets and spills over. So whatever's over in our regular general fund, we look at, our base is $1.5 million. So we have additional funding, and then that additional funding goes into our different reserve categories per our policy. And that's good news. The vehicle replacement schedule shows $297,000 in new equipment and $1.2 million in replacement equipment. And this also includes the $700,000 for the fire truck replacement down payment. And this is a total cost of $1.5 million. In all, there are seven vehicles that are being scheduled to be replaced in 15-16. Looking at the enterprise funds and moving to the water, as you can see, the proposed revenues in fiscal year 15-16 exactly match the revenues that we're projecting, or that were in the amended 2014-15 budget. And this is because staff is projecting that these revenues will remain flat due to a decrease in overall water consumption related to the ongoing water conservation efforts that have been caused by the severe drought conditions. The fiscal year 2015-16 budget includes funding for an update of the water and wastewater rate analysis. Operating expenditures are anticipated to increase by $558,000. The increase is primarily the result of increase in wholesale water rates, and as in the general fund, for salary and benefit increases that were negotiated with the city's bargaining units. The $4.4 million that you see here as a surplus for 15-16 is necessary to fund critical ongoing capital improvement projects. And then, moving on to the wastewater, you can see that, if there's a little different story, the revenues are actually increasing at about $900,000. And this reflects the five-year rate increase. You may be asking, well, why is wastewater increasing but water is not? And wastewater is calculated differently. Wastewater charges are calculated as set amount each year based on water flow using the winter months, when less water is being used for irrigation, and this is updated annually. So wastewater expenditures are estimated to increase by $721,000 due to an increase in funding allocated to aggressively addressing sewer system spot repairs, and as with the other two funds I mentioned earlier, salary and benefit increases. And just wanted to include a slide on the enterprise supplemental request, because I don't think we went over those in the budget study sessions. As you can see, in the first, in the reddish color, that's the personnel increase, our request, and the total for an engineering tech for $118,000, and this cost would be shared between water and wastewater. And then the recommended budget change request, which are the one-time costs, and these are the $314,000, these are costs that staff is recommending tonight. So total water requests were $373,000, total wastewater requests are $59,000, for a total of $432,000. But again, the one in the green are the recommended. We just wanted to show you all of the rest requests. Moving on to cable. The 2014-15 amended budget shows an operating surplus of approximately $770,000. This budget reflected a 5% increase in rates that was projected to go into effect in fall of 2014 and did not take place. The 2015-16 proposed budget reflects an operating surplus of $67,000, and this anticipates a net rate increase of 8.25%, which will be covered more in depth later this evening. Expenditures are increasing by approximately $839,000 due to higher costs from the National Cable Television Cooperative, the transfer of reoccurring costs that were originally purchased in the CIP budget, the purchase of cable boxes and equipment, and again, as the other funds with the salary and benefit increases. Moving on to the CIP, the proposed capital improvement program budget for fiscal year 15-16 includes total expenditures of $59 million, with $41 million in carryover appropriations for projects that have been started but are not completed at year-end, so we'll cross years, and new appropriations of $18 million. The majority of the project work activity and planned expenditures for 2015-16 is programmed in the water and wastewater funds, as you can see, I highlighted those in yellow also, 28% and 29%. I even made them a little bigger, can you tell? Just to, these funds make up 57% of the overall budget. The city has embarked on an aggressive program to replace all of the aged and deteriorated infrastructure that is critical to the success of these operations. And we do have some, seven new projects. So I know it looks like six, but we combined the water and wastewater and number two. So the 2015-16 capital improvement program proposes the new projects, which strive to enhance security at city facilities and improve and replace critical utility infrastructure. Moving on to stormwater, this section of the capital improvement budget includes two projects, the City Park Storm Channel Relocation and the Mason Avenue Box Culvert Repair. This was needed as a result of the big storm that we had in December, and the combined total of these projects is $800,000. And the funding has been allocated from the general fund capital reserve. The city receives approximately $600,000 in stormwater revenues from the assessment fees collected on the property tax bills, and this assessment does not include an escalation factor. This is barely enough to pay for ongoing operating costs. There is an additional $21 million of stormwater projects that are shown in the unfunded priorities category of the budget, because there is not a current funding source allocated. Project funding for water provides annual appropriations for repairs, improvements, and/or replacement of the city's water meters, mains, pump stations, tanks, and wells. There is currently $53.9 million budgeted for water projects in the five-year program. One of the projects that I like, of course, because being in finance, is the advanced water meter replacement, and that is moving forward. It's one of the bigger projects, a $5 million project for residential water meter replacement. And I believe in talking to Jim today, he said that it was on track to start July 15th. So that's good. The five-year program for wastewater projects totals $57.1 million and includes wastewater system improvements and ongoing system maintenance. And you may notice that a lot of the same streets are listed in the water and wastewater, and whenever possible, staff will try to budget both of these for the same designated areas in order to be more efficient and to cause the least disruption for residents. Moving on to streets, the fiscal year 2015-16 streets capital budget totals $3.1 million. With the combination of new funding and existing reserves from both the gas tax and measure A funds, staff was able to budget a one-time increase in the allocation from $800,000 to $1.3 million. I believe, again, this is also something that's going to be discussed later this evening in more detail. So just a five-year CIP project summary, the first, it identifies 56 new, or 56 projects with a five-year total project cost of $352 million. I know that the GAN is a little confusing, even for myself sometimes, so I wanted to give council just a little bit of a background, a little bit of a description of what it is. The GAN limit was designed to limit growth in government spending to be no faster than the growth in population and inflation. The appropriation limit is based on actual appropriations during the base year, which was 1986-87, and increases each year with the growth factors that are provided by the California Department of Finance. And you can see those factors here, the cost of living at 2.82, and the population adjustment factor of 2.69. It is important to note that not all revenue sources count against the city's GAN limit. GAN limits only constrain the appropriations from state and local tax sources. For this reason, the funds that are constrained by the GAN limit are the general fund, capital outlay funds, and certain special revenue funds if they are tax-generated. During any fiscal year, a government entity may not appropriate any proceeds of taxes received in excess of the appropriation limit. If the government does receive excess funds, which you can see, we do not, we are below the limit, which is good. If a government does receive, they may carry this excess funds into the next year for use, but then they can only do it for the second year, and after that, it must be returned to the taxpayers by reducing tax rates or fees. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the city manager, who wanted to make some additional comments, and then once she is done, I'll be open for any questions or comments.
Your staff report identifies certain supplemental or service enhancement expenditures that are proposed for the city council's separate consideration as part of your action to consider and ultimately approve the budget. The specific supplemental expenditures proposed are outlined in the staff report, and I wanted to call to your attention and be available to answer any questions, building on the study session discussion that occurred earlier this month. The items that are listed in the staff report include all of those that were proposed. Given the amount of general fund revenues exceeding expenditures in the amount of approximately $484,000, staff is recommending a program of additional staff positions and one-time expenditures that do not exceed that amount. There was a significant level of discussion, however, at the study session about the addition of other positions that are on this list, and those are in the general fund, specifically the police officer position, and the facilities, building and facilities, parks and facilities manager positions, that because of the lack of ongoing surplus revenues were not specifically recommended, but remain listed both in the staff report and in the budget as identified needs within the organization. Should it be the city council's interest to approve those items, then staff is certainly available and willing to provide you with some alternatives about how those might be funded in the budget at a less than a full-year cost in order to meet the city council's ongoing direction, that the budget be balanced with revenues and expenditures at least equal, and expenditures not exceeding revenues. So with that, we would be happy to answer any questions, and we look forward to your action to consider the budget tonight.
Any questions of staff before we open the public hearing? Mark, can we do, would you want us to do two separate public hearings this evening?
Well, I don't think the finance director has given the report on the master fee schedule yet, so we should have one public hearing for this, and then have a separate public hearing for the master fee schedule.
Okay. No questions of staff at this time? All right, this time we'll open the public hearing, and anyone from the public collect to address the city council and staff regarding item 8A.
Marty Medina, Garden Avenue. It went by really quick, I just wanted to know how much of the capital improvement projects are unfunded. It was like 129, or?
192 million.
192, that we don't have money to fix of the things that we identified that we need to fix.
Correct, that's stormwater projects and facility improvements.
Okay, thank you.
Or replacement.
Thank you. Anyone else? If we close the public hearing, you're going to be precluded from talking to us about this. We'll be taking some action. Any action? Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion second to close the public hearing.
On the question.
On the question. If you're going to speak, you're on camera, we want to hear you up there, if you have something to say. Please ask it at the mic. Tell us your name and your street, please.
Well, I'm Barbara Leetkan, I'm with Hip Housing. And I was sent by somebody who was injured, and this was kind of last minute, she sent me her email. I didn't quite hear a mention of the nonprofits that have been funded through your budget. It's not in this particular presentation. But Hip Housing has received monies from the city of San Bruno, and we are grateful for that. We are in a housing crisis that you all probably have had people talk to you about. We hear it every single day, and I hear it at church, and at the train station, and everywhere else, and overhear it from other people that are not part of my conversation. But we've had a 25% increase in requests for information and assistance. We've had a 65% increase in the people in the city of San Bruno that we've been able to assist. We have folks that are home sharing, we have folks that are doing self-sufficiency, our self-sufficiency program, that are living in San Bruno. And we have folks that have been able to open their homes to match in home sharing that have helped out emancipated foster youth. We work with people that are seniors and of all ages. And so we just greatly appreciate the amount that you're able to help us with that helps us do our job in a really hard time. And so I just wanted to say thank you on the behalf of Hip Housing.
Thank you. Thank you. Connie, you had a comment?
I would be happy to identify for the city council that as we have for many of the past years, the city is a strong supporter, both philosophically as well as financially of Hip Housing. And we once again have included a $30,000 allotment in the Community Development Department budget to support the programs of Hip Housing. That is fully included in the budget we're presenting for your consideration tonight.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? There is a motion and a second to close the public hearing on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, public hearing's closed, and the action by the council, discussion?
Through the chair.
Michael?
I wanted to make a request that we split up what we're approving tonight, so that we can approve the budget without the enhancements that are being proposed. And the reason I want to split those out is because I believe there's a few items that could potentially affect our budget going forward. There were some questions that were brought up about structural deficits and possible restructuring in public safety that might impact what we're doing overall. And I'd like to have a better handle on what those impacts might be before approving any enhancements, but I don't want to hold up the budget any longer than necessary. So I'd like the council to entertain the idea of possibly splitting, splitting up approval of the budget as it was presented, and then dealing with those enhancements separately. So just throwing that out there.
Anything else? Okay. Rico?
Through the chair. Couple things. First of all, I want to thank the finance director and the department for producing the budget and the CIP together, and on a timely fashion. So thank you. And to all the staff and all the departments. One thing I'd like to also consider is that we were talking about enhancements and the way, and city manager, finance director, correct me, if we had, not that it was within the context of what the enhancements were, if we went to a police officer, we were short about $63,000-plus to fund that officer, new officer. I would like to maybe entertain a suggestion to my colleagues that under the Human Resources Department, that when we had an assistant city manager, we made it an HR manager instead of an HR director. In the preceding budget after that, it became an HR director again. My understanding is, is that we've appointed the, the city manager appointed the assistant city manager on June 2nd of '14. We're obviously surpassed that a year. The difference between a manager versus director is about $45,396. With that savings, I'd like to see that savings potentially be used for the enhancement of the officer, and therefore to help fund that. I know the other concept was trying to just say $63,000, hopefully we'll be having a great year, and things are on a great course. But of course, to me, we need to balance a budget, just like we balance our checkbooks at home. I believe that there are other opportunities to make up that small difference, and I appreciate the questions being answered by the staff. But there are items, like in the central garage, part-time, though I know it's an intercompany type department, and I understand they're going to do a part-time person, but in the last two years, they've used $702, unless my notes are wrong, and in essence, asking $30,000. I think there are little things here or there we can tweak, and I know it's not significant in our large budget, but I think we can achieve funding that police officer with some tweaks to the budget, and I wanted to bring that up as a consideration to council. I also want to thank the finance department and the staff for the equipment reserve. I think that has been long overdue, and you indicated here that there were 13 items that were deleted, that were antiquated, two items that were added, 12 items that were corrected. So that to me is a good thing for us to review periodically, and I know it had been a long time to do that at the same time as the budget, I think is a good, a big undertaking, and I appreciate that. I know we talked about streets, and we all know the streets in the city of San Bruno are a concern to most, and so maybe we'll discuss that later in the agenda. But I did ask again about the monies that were coming back from the trust for the staff time. I know some of it needs to be allocated to the enterprise fund, some of it needs to then could be remained for general fund possible purposes. Again, I'd like to see those monies put aside for one-time usage and to focus on the streets of San Bruno. I also would like to have the finance director go ahead and just, because to me, I get, I'm getting concerned in regards to the retirement, the unfunded liabilities that we have in the city. I know it's nothing that we have straight before us today, and it could be time after we're off the council that others will have to deal with it. But I think it's something important, just for a minute or two, if you could explain where we're at today and what kind of steps for the self-insurance, as well as the unfunded liabilities.
Sure. As I mentioned in the responses, with the self-insurance fund, we did increase, in this fiscal year 14-15, we reduced, we were able to reduce the deficit from 800, I don't have the number right in front of me, but a little over 800,000, I believe, down to 500 and something thousand. So we're hoping that this year or two, if things are better than what, you know, we're being very conservative with our budget, so we're hopeful if things are better, that maybe we can request during one of the quarterly reports to apply another 200,000 or 300,000 towards that self-insurance fund, and slowly get to where we're either funding it fully towards that self-insurance fund and slowly get to where we're either funding it fully or, because right now, if you look in our city's CAF, it was a negative fund, or a negative balance of 800 and some thousand, so almost 900, I believe. As far as the PERS, you know, we have done some, my staff and I have attended some training, a webinar, to actually look at ways to start reducing that, which also would mean designating funding to slowly start paying that unfunded liability down. So once you start paying that down, the percentage that's allocated to that unfunded liability, and I, again, I think I had it in the, let me see if I have it in front of me, just to give you an idea. So the percentage that's allocated to the unfunded liability for 2015-16 is, for just miscellaneous, is 12.78%. So as you start paying that down, that amount goes down. So the total is 22.8%. So you can see that it's half or more than half of what we're paying. So that is a goal of mine. You know, we were, in the webinar, they did mention that it's better to have someone come and do the study to show you how much, how aggressive you should be, how long it would take to get that paid off. So that may be something that, if it's the council's wish, that we could definitely look into and maybe bring it forward in this coming year.
I would make that suggestion, and I think we need to look at that and start to begin the discussion and obviously plan for the future. And then finally, obviously, we still have work in the Glenview area that is continuing, and I know there are some projects that were discussed, and I just want to keep our eye on the ball as far as, A, having some progress on those, but also the funding mechanism that we have left for that. And I get concerned again, and I've gotten some of the numbers here, that we obviously aren't too into other aspects that prohibit us from fulfilling some of the obligations that I think the neighborhood and the community may have for up in that area. So those are my comments for now.
Okay. Anyone else? Any action by the council on this one item?
Through the chair, I will do that, but just the comments, and obviously, we've been through, many of us have been through many budgets on this, and this is a good one. And I'm very pleased that the economy is coming around, and I'm very pleased that our staff has taken that prudent approach and addressed some needs that we have, we had to let go, you know, in leaner times. So I think this is a good step. I think as the economy, time shows that the economy is stable, that we can improve a little more, but I'm very pleased with what's going on. I'm more of a risk taker as far as seeing some of the more important things get funded, knowing that, confident that we will be able to fund them. But as far as the basic budget, I'm very, very pleased with it, and thanks staff for that, and thank you for your good news and your first budget. Thank you. And with that, I'd like to introduce a resolution for adoption.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Wait, 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 through the chair.
I mean, the revised, without the enhancements. I'll make that clear.
It's all three resolutions under this one public hearing.
If possible.
You can do all three at the same time if you'd like.
All three without the enhancements.
Okay. Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. I just want to chime in a little bit to let, actually congratulate staff too for all our hard work. This doesn't just happen this evening. We had two very lengthy study sessions at city hall a few weeks ago on this item, and at many, many, many staff hours, and the department had time to put this together. So we have watched it very closely over the years, been through some good times, then some very, very tough times where we made it through, and now we're kind of coming out of it. So it's good, but we're still very conservative on our budgets, and we want to make it work for everyone. So I just want you to know that this doesn't get done lightly, and it just doesn't happen this evening. There's a lot of work to go into this, as you can see. So once again, thank you very much.